Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I am going to adjourn closed session and reconvene open session. We are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'll start the report from closed session. By unanimous vote, the board completed and approved the superintendent's annual evaluation for the 24-25 school year. And Madam Vice President.
All right, we have three here. So the first one, I move to approve the student expulsion case number 252603, be expelled via stipulated expulsion agreement due and including June 5th, 2026.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Vice President and a second from, I believe that was Trustee Blaskwess. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
On to the second one, I move to approve the readmission of the student expulsion case number 232409 for the 2025-2026 school year to the School of Residence Marina High School.
Okay, have a motion from the Vice President and a second from Trustee Offstettel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
And last one, I move to approve the readmission of the student expulsion case number 242506 for the 2025-2026 school year to the School of Residence Monterey High School.
Sirs? Have a motion from the Vice President and a second from Dr. Lusk. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That's good, good. All right. Moving on, public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the Board of Education on matters within the jurisdiction of the board but not on this agenda may do so during the public comment period for up to three minutes. Each agenda item is limited to 20 minutes except public comment items 5A, 5B, and 5C unless a time limit is extended by a vote of the Board of Education. Public comments on specific agenda items are heard under that item. Is there any public comment? In person? No? Any public comment online? Okay, Carla Lobo, go ahead.
I'm here today after nearly eight months of documented attempts to work collaboratively with MPUSD to secure legally required services for my son. Since July 2025, before the first day of school, through registration, the development of his Section 504, planned numerous emails, verbal conversations, and a scheduled meeting with Katie Rivera, I have repeatedly stated that my son requires a one-on-one support aid to safely access his education. Despite timely notice and documented need, my son was punished rather than supported. He received a referral describing disability-based behaviors, including covering his ears, saying no, and crying when overwhelmed. Yet, he was placed in timeout for an entire school day, a direct violation of Section 504's nondiscrimination and behavioral support obligations. Within four months, my son underwent over 58 independent and district evaluations, all indicating a significant need for adult support. On October 3rd, 16th, and 27th, I formally requested an independent educational evaluation and stated that if a one-on-one support was not provided, I required a prior written notice. This lawful request went unanswered for two months until I reached out. When a PWN was finally issued in December, it was legally insufficient, deferring to a request for a SCA classroom data, despite the IDEA requirement that services not be delayed when need is already established. The 58 assessments, including district data, had already confirmed this need. Yet, I must also highlight a serious concern on that PWN issued by the district staff, including language stating that if I re-enroll my son, the district may file a due process against me to enforce services despite the fact that he cannot access or complete goals without a one-on-one support. This demonstrates coercion rather than collaboration, a willingness to place a child in an environment where he cannot succeed, which is deeply concerning and not child-centered. During Part 1 of the IEP, again, I requested an interim, interim one-on-one support. In writing, I was told that interim one-on-ones are typically for emergencies and approved by the Assistant Superintendent. Denial of faith is an emergency. At Part 2 of the IEP, documents were altered the same day claiming he now could access education without a one-on-one, a sudden reversal that shocked all providers that were present. So, as of now, I am asking the district for immediate action within the next 24 hours. Approve interim one-on-one support, provide written approval of my IE request, initiate corrective oversight. I am giving the district 24 hours to provide a meaningful response, not an acknowledgement because you have already had eight months to do so. The time for delay is over. My son deserves immediate lawful and accountable action. I will take legal action if I don't get a 24-hour response.
Okay, thank you. All right, I realized I skipped over student public comments. Are there any students who would like to provide public comment to the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll move now. Is there any other public comment? Just one more call. All right, seeing none. Is there any public agency communications? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment and now move to organization of the board. And I will now turn over item A to Dr. Difanbaugh.
Yes, thank you. This is the yearly organizational board meeting. And for 6A, I serve as the This is the yearly organizational board meeting, and for 6A, I serve as the chair to seek recommendations for the appointment of a board president. So I'll open the floor. Are there any recommendations?
Dr. Diffenbaum, I move approval of the election of our board president, Mr. Tom Jennings.
Move for Tom Jennings?
I'll second.
And a second. Before I go to vote, I want to make sure there's opportunities for others if there's another nomination. Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. President, and now I will turn it back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Diffenbaum. Okay, we'll move now to, and thank you, Board. I appreciate it. I hope to serve you well.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'm going to move to election of Vice President Clerk of the Board. Are there nominations?
I nominate Veronica Myramontes.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion from Dr. Lusk and a second from Trustee Blaskewitz. Are there any other nominations, just to be sure? Okay. Call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations. Okay, now, item C, appoint superintendent as secretary to the Board of Education. Sarah Motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Trustee Uchita and a second from Dr. Lusk. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Item D, discuss and approve the 2026 board meeting calendar. Dr. Diffenbaum.
Yes, thank you. This has come before the board as an information item, and now it's here for approval. We have maintained the customary second and fourth Tuesdays as our board meeting dates, except for when there is a school vacation, then it has changed a little bit. We did keep in there, and it's shown on green, is the community or meetings that happen in the community at the local high schools, but hearing from schools within that community. And we can refine the initial way we did it, or based on, you know, board direction, or switch it up. But we did maintain those, and then you'll see a date for a retiree reception in red in May, based on feedback from last time, we're having it as a separate day rather than during a board meeting. I hope that...there was a time when I put a meeting on Halloween and I also maybe Valentine's Day, and so I...we did our best, hope that we didn't do that, but if we did, this is obviously the calendar, but the board can, through motion and election of the board, change meeting dates as long as we give the proper 72-hour notice to the public. So, it can be changed at a later date if there is an error involved. So that's an overview and how we got to the calendar.
Okay, are there any questions or suggested edits? Go ahead, Trustee Blaskewitz.
Yes, the October 27th meeting, can that be put on the 20th instead? It's a personal request because October 27th is my birthday, and I haven't been able to celebrate in five years. I just...
We typically don't meet back-to-back weeks. It's hard for staff to prepare, but I'm open to...
Remind me if the green again is...
The greens are in the community meeting, yeah. And the red is the retirement reception. And the yellows are the breaks.
But we would give you a pass on the 27th if needed.
Thank you.
It's no problem.
Question. Remind me when graduation is? This May? June? June 5th?
So graduation will be June 5th.
Okay.
With middle school promotions, June 4th.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? About the calendar? Okay? Okay. Is there...okay. All right, is there any public comment on our calendar? All right, seeing none. Is there a motion for our calendar?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion from Trustee Uchita and a second from, I believe that was Trustee Offstettel. Anything further? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on, discuss and approve appointments of board representatives and alternatives or alternates to various organizations and subcommittees. Dr. Diffenbaum.
Yes, so we have attached to the agenda is the information based on the past board, and we now put up this as a blank, and then what we'll ask is that the board fill it in as they so choose, and then approve it after we've done all of the items, rather than one at a time.
All right. Okay. Let me turn the mic back on. Okay, so Board, for the Community Human Services Project Representative, who was that representative?
That's a position I've been...that's a position that I've been serving in, and I would like to continue to be the representative. We're getting a new executive director, and that's one of the areas that we really want to have begin really powerfully for us as a JPA, and so I'd like to continue to represent our district.
Okay. Any issues? Comments? Nope, okay, good. So, Dr. Lusk, and then alternate for the Community Human Services Project.
I was alternate last time. I'd like to stay as well. I did represent one year, so I do have a little bit of experience. I'm really happy to support Betty when she's not available.
Yes, thank you.
Any...everybody good with that?
That's really good. Thank you, I appreciate that. You know, building relationships with other school districts and other city council representatives, and it is really great, and the support that we provide to our children within this district and districts throughout the county is really critical at this time. So, thank you, colleagues, for supporting that.
Okay. Okay, moving on now, Mission Trails Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement. Who was the primary? Okay.
And I will continue as someone really...
I'm seeing head shakes. Say again?
Career Technical Education. Career Technical Education.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Uchita is the primary, and...
I was the alternate, but because of the date, it's conflicting with another meeting that I have because it's Thursdays, I believe, so I was hoping to request to not be the alternate on that.
Okay.
To see if anyone else would...
All right, is there somebody who would be willing to serve as the alternate on that to assist Mr. Uchita if he can't make it to the meeting?
I would do that, sure.
Trustee Sanders? All right, thank you. Everybody good with that? Okay. All right, and we'll move now to AMP. I think I was the rep...primary. Oh, I apologize. Monterey County School Boards Association Executive Committee first.
I have been serving as a rep to that committee, and Dr. Whitmire was the alternate, and I'd like to continue if I can.
Okay. Everybody okay with Dr. Lusk's primary? All right. And then alternate, is there... Mr. Uchita is the alternate? Everybody okay with that? All right, great. Now we'll move to Access Monterey Peninsula. I was the primary. I'm fine being the primary. I honestly have...I have to be honest, I have not heard from them. Go ahead.
Actually, I was going to ask if I could be the primary. We just had the restructuring meeting today.
Absolutely. I'm happy...I'm happy to take the alternate position if nobody would like it. Thank you for getting involved with them. Okay. Everybody good with that? All right. All right, CSBA Equity Network. I think Dr. Lusk was our primary, right?
It was...
Or was it Ronnie? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
I'd be happy to continue that. I haven't...it wasn't too much last year, but see what I can do this year as well. I'd be happy to do that, unless anyone else is interested.
All right, how about the alternate?
I was the alternate, and I did nothing. I don't mind continuing on course, but of course Ronnie let me know if I need to step up.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Okay? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. President, may I just share with both of those representatives that, you know, CSBA has adopted an equity statement that now will be a focus for the CTAC movement forward, closing the achievement gap, and so I think you can expect some meetings...
Some work on that one?
Yes, some work on that one. So, I'm glad to know that the two of you are really stepping up to work with that particular committee, so thank you.
Awesome. Okay. All right, so now moving on to Board Policy Subcommittee in Marina. For Marina, I believe Mr. Uchita is primary and I was secondary?
Can I...
You want to be secondary? Yes. Yes, I can be the primary. No problem. And Mr. Uchita is secondary? Okay. Now for Monterey, there's a couple of you, so go ahead and fight over it. Who wants...
I took over after Dr. Whitmire stepped down. I would like to continue if that's okay. It's really good. I feel like I'm still learning, but then maybe next year you can take it, so you can start learning.
All right.
If that's okay.
Okay, and you're okay being alternate? All right. And then Seaside, I apologize, it is not Monterey that has the three, it's Seaside that has the three, so you guys fight over who wants to do it.
Technically, we have all but Marina. My area has all but Marina. I'm happy with whatever if there's a spot available.
I'd like to stay on the committee as the primary.
Okay.
And can I just kind of substitute?
Yeah, totally.
Okay. Okay, so Trustee Blaskewitz is primary and Dr. Lusk as secondary? Okay, great. Moving on. I think that was it, right? Okay. Hey, we got through it. So, now that we got through it, is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Trustee Sanders and a second in stereo, so somebody...thank you. And a second from Trustee Offstettel. Is that who I heard first? Okay, I apologize if I should have heard somebody else first. Okay, any further discussion? Any public comment on our...on our committees? Okay, not seeing any? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, almost done with the organization. Discuss and adopt Resolution 25/26-08 Designating Authorized Agent to Sign School Orders Effective December 2025 to December 2026. Is there a motion? Or discussion? Is there...okay? We need to adopt the resolution, guys.
Maybe, do you want me to give a quick overview? This is just...
Sure.
Every year we bring, which then authorizes us to sign things from the state, such as accepting grants or, you know, other fiscal reports that we need to make to the state. And so that's why you see on the attachment, it's usually the business office and some of their representatives. So, this just gives authorization that then the state knows, okay, this was approved by the board. And we did have one time when the state called and said, "I noticed something was signed in it, and can you send us the board-approved authorization?" So we did, and we had it all, so we were on point there. But, so that's just the overview.
Okay, Trustee Blaskewitz.
Oh, I was going to say, I'll make the motion, but don't we have to ask for public comment first?
We will, once I get a motion and a second. So I have a motion from Trustee Blaskewitz. Is there a second? Have a second from Trustee Uchita. Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will now...I will now ask for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we've organized the board. Okay, high school...
Organize the board.
Student representative reports. High school student representatives, we're going to start with Central Coast. Nobody here from Central Coast. Okay, so we will go to Marina High. Representative from Marina High to give a report? Maya? No? Okay. How about Seaside High School?
Good evening, Dr. Diffenbaum, President Jennings, and the MPUSD Board. We hope everyone had a wonderful day. My name is Alexis Salazar. I'm this year's ASB Vice President. Currently, my favorite thing about Seaside High is the new sandwich bar. And with that being said, here is a recap of some of the great things that have been happening at Seaside High. On December 12, Seaside High is hosting our annual glow-in-the-dark holiday night rally from 6:00 to 7:30. However, this year, we decided to do things differently from last year's by adding a multicultural twist and opening up the floor for any clubs or groups to perform. Seaside High is having our winter holiday spirit week for students to enjoy and participate during this stressful time of finals. On Monday, the theme is holiday PJ, so students will stay festive and cozy during class. Tuesday is ski resort day, where students wear puffer jackets and beanies. Wednesday is SANA versus L's, where students compete between Team SANA by wearing red or Team L's by wearing green. And Thursday is our winter Wonderland White Out, and lastly, Friday is our Quarter Zip versus Nike Tech Day.
Hello, good evening, MPUSD Board. My name is Gabby Madrid. I am this year's ASB Secretary. Currently, my favorite thing about Seaside High is the amount of support provided to students, such as tutoring for finals and college application workshops, and this is the final part of our...and this is the second part of our recap of amazing things that have taken place for the past two weeks. GEARUP and EAOPE have been working hard to support our students during this stressful time with their three-day final study jam from December 9th to December 11th. These tutoring sessions are after school, ending at 4:30 each day. As a treat for our hard-working students, GEARUP and EAOPE will be providing free food for each student receiving tutoring. On Tuesday, December 9th, students receive chicalas and beans. Wednesdays, students get to eat loaded nachos, and finally, on Fridays, students get fried chicken and potato wedges. Yesterday, our Seaside High School leadership students went on...went to Seaside Middle School to launch our 2026 to 2027 school year welcome campaign for the class of 2023...I mean, 2030. We encouraged current SMS eighth graders to sign up for a shadow day at Seaside High School, where they will get the opportunity to follow one of our current Spartans students and experience a day at Seaside High. That concludes the summary of all the great things that have happened recently and all the amazing things that are to come. Thank you for your time. This concludes our board report, and remember, go Spartans!
Awesome, thank you. How about Monterey High?
Good evening, Superintendent Diffenbaum, Board President Jennings, and esteemed board members. The following are the happenings at Monterey High School. We are near the end of the semester with a lot to celebrate all over campus. The Monterey High players have finished their production of Radium Girls, and it was a massive success for all involved. The play was a departure from the comedies and musicals that have been typically graced on our stage, bringing a contemplative and stirring atmosphere to Monterey High. The tragedy of the Radium Factory workers and the... The tragedy of the radiant factory workers and the ambitious story to tell, however, we are proud to tell the efforts of our students to take on such an important task. Congratulations to Ms. Welch and the theater team. The Monterey High School's competitive cheer team is in its inaugural season as they have been exceeding expectations. At the regional competition last week, where only three out of the 10 teams advanced to the CCS finals in January, Monterey High qualified with a score of 88 out of 100. They will be competing for the CCS title and have time to get even better before the final competition. This past weekend, the MPUSD Science Fair withheld and every single Monterey High participant qualified for the county competition. We are super proud of all of our students and we would like to highlight a couple such as Sarah Bay, Anthony Cabrera Hernandez, and Catherine Nador's Project Dermatology 101, Bacteria Elimination by Different Forms of Facial Cleansers, which received the best overall project award. Ennio and Kim's Enzymic Acceleration of PHA-Based Microplastic Degradation by Protease Cellulose and Amylose with Lactobacterium Planetarium, which won the Best Methodology Award, and Sebastian Berube, Trast House, Isaiah's Geronimo Mora's Do the Ratios of Meat to Vegetables Effect Natural Gas Yields in Anorobic Digestor, which won Best Presentation Award. Congratulations to all participants and we look forward to the county competition coming up soon. That's all we, that we have for this week. We hope everyone has a successful final season and go doors!
Thank you, great job. Okay, now we're gonna move to high school student representative recognition. Dr. Diffenbaugh.
Yeah, so we're so thankful for our high school students, uh, who come and, uh, give the news of the schools. Um, we wanted to have a small token of our appreciation. We have a certificate for you as well as a, a gift card, so I would ask that, uh, Seaside High, if you guys could come up as well as, uh, Monterey High. What we'd like to do is you come through the circle here and just shake hands or fist bump, um, board members, and I'll, I'll give the certificate. So if you guys can come, if we can give them maybe one, one more round of applause as they come up.
Okay. All right, we're gonna now move to presentations, recognition, Military Liaison Superintendent's report, upcoming events. Uh, we'll start with the status report from the Military Liaisons.
Good evening, Board President Jennings, Superintendent Diffenbaugh, esteemed, uh, school board, and, uh, student trustees as well. My name is Jay McKenzie, School Liaison for the Navy. Uh, this is Blanca Felix Guerrero, School Liaison for the Army. Uh, and I'm presenting today on our MIC-3. I'm very excited about our MIC-3 training. Uh, MIC-3 stands for Military Interstate Compact, uh, Children's Commission Compact. And that is a, uh, program that supports our military students throughout, uh, the nation, and it's a compact and agreement between all the states to support our military students, uh, in regards to placement, uh, enrollment, graduation, special education services, all of those things that can be very, very challenging in a transition. Our military kids move around a lot, so when they go from one district to another, they're sometimes confronted with different requirements, different expectations. The Military Interstate Compact, um, Agreement, uh, levels that field for the students and ensures that they are, um, they have a smooth transition from one duty station to the next to help them support the mission of protecting our country and, and maintaining the peace. Uh, we're glad to, uh, report that MIC-3, through the Military Child Education Coalition, will be sending, uh, subject matter experts to our district on February 19th, uh, to conduct training for our principals, um, hopefully our counselors and community liaisons. This is, would be a great, great benefit, uh, because we're actually having these experts be able to express and, uh, explain the compact for everyone. Um, so we're very excited about that. We're working with Cresta and Allen Crawford on coordinating that, but we're already scheduled for February 19th, uh, most likely in the morning, 9 to 11. It's a two-hour session. Uh, our staff will be receiving Compact 101 training, uh, and the follow-up Compact 201 training. So we're hoping to make experts of our local administrative and counseling teams to support our students.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I'm very excited to report to everybody that, um, we finally got approval for, uh, Military Family Life Counselors at, uh, Seaside Middle School and, uh, Monterey High School. So, uh, Marshall Elementary will be sharing with Seaside Middle School, so they're gonna be on a schedule of three days at Marshall, two days at Seaside Middle School. And, um, the more participation that we get, the better, and I can push forward, um, to try to get somebody full-time at each school site. We just have to make sure that the need is there. Same thing for La Mesa, they will be sharing the NFLAC from there with, uh, Monterey High School, three and two. Very exciting, um, I know this has been a long time, this was something that was practiced before and they were, um, sharing campuses, so very excited for that. And of course, on Monavista, um, we always have a NFLAC on-call in case, um, they're needed there as well. And we're hoping that, um, we can, um, see the need in other school sites to just continue to help that support for military children.
Okay. Uh, it's some big changes over at Naval Support Activities Monterey. Naval Support Activities Monterey is actually the, uh, host of the Naval Postgraduate School, and our commander, uh, Captain, uh, Robert Butch Smith, uh, retired on, uh, December 5th. So we had a change of command, uh, with the outgoing commander, and our new commander is Captain Ryan Easterday. Uh, he's already active and very excited about working with the school district and supporting our community. Uh, we have tentatively scheduled a meet and greet, meet and greet with, uh, little Mesa, uh, schools, and also we've invited, uh, PK to be there as well. And so we'll be able to engage in conversation, uh, and learning about our school district. Okay, so Captain Easterday is very, very committed to education and wants to develop a strong partnership with our district, uh, and, uh, support our military students.
And last but not least, uh, we met with Monterey High School against Seaside Middle School, Marshall and La Mesa for all, like, month of the Military Child events and activities for April. John and I are working very heavily on trying to get, um, uh, MPUSD as a whole to, um, participate, um, every April to celebrate military children and their efforts and, you know, how much they sacrifice, um, as very young children to, you know, close to being in graduation states. So we've been working hard with, like, Purple Star to also, um, make the schools very aware and willing to help all military incoming families. And so for now, we've decided with Monterey High, Marshall and, and Seaside Middle School, that purple up would be like April 15th, since that's the official date. For La Mesa and Marshall, April 20th to the 24th, that week is gonna be the celebration of, uh, military, um, children. And then for April 24th, we have La Mesa and Marshall doing, um, a parade and recognitions. Uh, and I know that it will kind of conflict if we're trying to get most of the sites to celebrate month of the military child, but as long as we're doing some efforts, we'd really appreciate it. And John and I are willing to, um, get with any school site to plan if you guys need us to bring, um, you know, military members to say thank you. Even if the population is very minimal, we'd love to bring, um, soldiers out there to thank the children and have, um, participation there. Because, uh, for Marshall, we started our volunteers. I took seven Marines on, uh, this last Friday, very exciting. Uh, all the children from, uh, Kinder to sixth grade were playing football, soccer, every sport, they were out there. I had the Marines out there for about two hours and a half. And so now this is an effort that we're gonna do, uh, continue to do every Friday. And so I've mentioned it with the other schools too, um, to see if they're on board and we can take the soldiers that way as well. That way, you know, the kids start to see these guys in uniform and feel comfortable and actually starts to notice, um, what military families are about and that, that's not only what, you know, young children think that they're going to fight, but it's more like what we bring to the community.
And I would be remiss, I would be remiss if I didn't say, go Navy, beat Army? I know I'm, I know it's hard for me because I'm an Army brat. I work for the Navy now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah, go Army. Okay. Now we're gonna move on, I'm gonna get off of that one. We're gonna move on to recognition of board member Dr. Betty Lusk for serving as the 2025 CSBA president. Dr. Diffenbaugh.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Lusk. We just wanna honor you and, um, thank you for your representation of MPUSD at the state level. Um, it was so great to be up there, uh, at the conference and to see you. Not only your excellent, uh, delivery of your speech, but just how much respect and admiration other school board members have for you, um, and how much you have brought, uh, and helped MPUSD shine. So we're, we're just, uh, so thankful for your leadership. I know it was a, a ton of work, um, and the way that you approached it, I think, was, uh, really commendable to get out into schools up and down the state, um, to see all the great things that are happening. So, uh, there's, we, we have a, something to give you, but first, we wanted, uh, the community to be able to, um, see this video that is just such a tremendous, uh, acknowledgement of, of who you are and all that you have done. So, um, if you give us a moment to, to tune this up, and then, uh, then later we'll, uh, give you a gift.
This is an American story. It begins at a one-room schoolhouse in rural Arkansas, in the confines of the Jim Crow South, and ends, as so many aspirational stories do, along the California coast.
My journey began in a little country town with 200 people, and I had a great village, a great community. That community gave me what I needed as a little country girl to believe that I could be more than I was.
From an early age, Betty's world was shaped by the dreams encouraged by her grandfather.
I would ask him, what's on the outside of the ocean? And he would say, the world for you to see. Betty Lou.
And she did. Betty followed those dreams from Arkansas to California, beginning her career as a special education teacher in the Merced Union High School District. She later moved to the Central Coast, teaching third grade at Marina Vista Elementary in Monterey Peninsula USD. Decades later, newly retired after a distinguished career, Betty was ready to enjoy travel and new pursuits, but her community had other plans.
They said, we need you to run for school board. I go, excuse me? I am not, I don't have the time, Dr. Lusk. We need you to campaign for school board. There are two incumbents that have not been meeting the needs of our district.
Nineteen years later, Betty Lusk remains a dedicated MPUSD trustee and now serves as the 2025 President of the California School Boards Association. Betty's tenure also encompassed a legislative session where Governor Gavin Newsom signed three CSBA-sponsored bills into law, modernizing school board compensation stipends for the first time in 40 years, holding the state accountable for eliminating redundant or useless reporting requirements that take time away from student support, and expanding the ability of all members, especially small and rural LEAs, to build education workforce housing. Betty's service is rooted in the belief that every student, regardless of background or zip code, deserves the opportunity to thrive. That belief was tested and strengthened during her transformative leadership at Seaside High School. In 1991, Seaside High was struggling. Test scores were low, morale was poor, and the school had been officially designated for improvement. But Betty did what she has always done. She rolled up her sleeves and went to work.
Once we came together and brought all the resources together, it took five years, but after that five years, we shifted from the underperforming school to the school that received a six-year accreditation from the Western Association of Colleges.
That experience laid the groundwork for her purpose at CSBA. Since joining in 2009, Betty has served in a remarkable range of leadership roles, from Vice President and President-elect, to Director-at-Large African-American, and Chair or Member of numerous committees. As President, she has championed CSBA's effort to compel the state of California to prioritize closing the achievement gap and to provide greater support for LEAs striving to accelerate performance for underserved students. Her commitment is grounded in the principles she learned early in her career.
That's when I knew that I wanted to go into administration and really broaden my impact, uh, on the decisions that were made for kids and to be a part of changing the system so that all kids could really be given the opportunity to be successful.
To advance this work, Betty has made it a priority to visit districts across the state, listening, learning, and lifting up the voices of educators, board members, and students in every region.
How do we, what do we need to do to change it? We need to truly be inclusive, go deeper. Inclusivity really is about hearing every voice, taking the time to hear every voice, and use that to really, as a team, from a collaborative standpoint, make the best decisions for the children of California.
And as the challenges facing public education grow more complex, Betty offers a message of perseverance and courage.
Listen, this is not the time to become so disheartened, so depressed about what is happening in education. This is the time to step up and do more.
Thank you, Dr. Betty Lusk, for uplifting every voice, for putting students first, and for dedicating your life to service. Your leadership has inspired communities from Arkansas to California, and your legacy will continue to light the path for generations to come. This is an American story.
Uh, so, a- as a board, um, and, and cabinet team, uh, we wanted to, a special gift, and this is from the Monterey Herald feature, Betty Lusk from Monterey County Classrooms to Statewide Influence, so you can, uh, have this on.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for everything that you do.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you.
I need a photo too.
Thank you. Thank you. It's so precious, thank you so much. As I look at the students, Jaden, I look at the two of you, yeah, I need to put my glasses on, it's not Brian. I think about my beginning. And my father had a third-grade education, my mother had a seventh-grade education. And my mother's desire was always to be a teacher. And as the only daughter in a family of four brothers, um, poor country family, and a s- community that raised cotton and corn and chickens and pigs and hogs, um, we never knew we were poor. As children, we always thought we were really rich because there was food in the freezer and there was, there were greens and what have you, huh, across this road from our home. But education was important to them. And there was a lady that used to sit on the front porch every morning as we walked the little country road to our one-room schoolhouse and ask us questions and make statements. Betty Lou, you all be good students, mind your teacher. You can be smart, you can be anything you want, Betty Lou. And, um, I believed her. And so I stand on the shoulders of an aunt, Estelle, who was a teacher. She was my... She was my dad's half-sister and dad wasn't our friend. And bottom line, never went to school. But Aunt Estelle said to me, with her little prim and proper gloves on and teachers didn't go to work without their suits and their hats and their prim and proper gloves during those, that era. But she told me that again, education was the key. My grandfather, we called him Papa, said the same thing. And my family supported me in going all the way up the ladder to get a doctorate's degree. My mom was too sick to even attend my graduation for that doctorate's degree, but my belief is that every child, each one of you deserves to have everything you need to be successful. And I made a commitment when Dr. Nancy Dalton made, appointed me to Seaside High School as principal. I made the commitment long before that, but I found out then that I could make an impact across the larger audience and I'm grateful for Mr. Uchita, who was on the team at that time. And we made the change. We shifted that school from underperforming to just what you heard. Because we believe that kids could be all and anything that they wanted to be. So I say to both of you, never let anyone stop you from believing and dreaming because you can make it happen. And there's always someone, like MPUSD has been for me during this journey, that will be standing behind you, around you, to support you along that journey. That's what I perceived, and that's why you see what you saw from a CSBA level. My heart is about kids. And the people that I walk with on this journey feel the same way. The people that you see sitting at this board, this man who came to lead our district 12 years ago. We selected him because he believed that MPUSD could be a world-class district. We reimagined Monterey High School. He moonshot, moonshot, moonshot thinking. That was what he presented to us, ladies and gentlemen, as a board. And Marina has his focus. Monterey became an international baccalaureate school. Seaside became a computer-focused school. And everything just grew from there. That's why dual enrollment and all that you've talked about, Jaden, as a student board member, is there for you to talk about because of his belief, his vision, and us as a board supporting him. Enough said. I am gonna continue as long as I have strength and breath in my body to fight the good fight because closing the achievement gap is what CSBA is focused on now from a statewide perspective. Dr. Difanba, I'll say this and gave us a presentation. This is the last piece, Dr., Mr. President. There was a presentation a few board meetings ago about pathways for all. And you remember that "all" was capitalized. That's what it has to be, come state, from a state perspective, for all, special needs to advanced placement to college level. All students. MPUSD is starting that journey already. And other districts throughout the states will use us as a model that they'll replicate. So God bless you and thank you for this recognition because it, it means so much coming from my own at the local level. Thank you, Dr. Difanba, and thank you, colleagues. Really appreciate you standing with me and taking the time to listen to my comments tonight. This is very precious. Okay? God bless. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Lusk. You mean more to me than you know.
Thank you, President.
Okay. Superintendent's report and upcoming events. Dr. Difanba.
All right. Lots to report, but I'll try to make it quick. First up, I just wanted the community to see that we were awarded the Golden Bell for our work in P3 up in Sacramento. And you can see Ms. McIntosh and her team. And we had the honor to go across the stage and then take, take a picture after. Really, it represents ongoing work that we're doing, but certainly a point in time where we should stop and reflect and celebrate some of the progress. So that was very exciting. We're also celebrating Inclusive School Week this week, December 8th through 12th. And so we're celebrating all our students, our students with special needs, ensuring that they feel a sense of safety, belonging, and care at each of our campuses. As you heard tonight, but want to emphasize for the community that Seaside High is holding a holiday night rally, glow-in-the-dark, but it is free for the whole family. So we're really, Seaside High is doing a lot of work in bridging the community and the school. And so we invite you to come onto campus and help cheer and, and have some fun with our student leaders. Want to emphasize that the window is closing for high school student transfers, so you, you must fill out a transfer if you would like to go to a different school, or if you're on a transfer, we ask that you do it, complete it every year. And then our District English Language Advisory Committee, or DLAC, these are the dates coming up again. December 10th is the next meeting, but please mark your calendars in the future. These are at Dr. Martin Luther King Junior School of the Arts. Food is always there, as well as childcare. So we ask that you come and help shape the, the future of the district. Finally, I just wanted to remember Helen Rucker, who was a longtime Seaside resident, civil rights leader, and MPUSD employee. And so we did just a, a short video when she passed, so we'd like to just play it for the whole community to see.
That was a great pleasure mine to have worked with so many wonderful people at King and Manzanita and all those years. It was my pleasure. Well, I'm always hopeful for the students to, to achieve as I taught them to achieve and I encourage them to achieve. If you forget your past, you, you've forgotten a lot of, of what is you. It, it's important that you remember and, and try to emulate those things that were important to you as, as, as you were growing up and everything. Work hard, study hard, achieve, do what you're supposed to do. I really am supportive of, of a whole lot of people who have been leaders in MPUSD and have tried to do their best to, 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 to bring about what's best for the students. And I'm really grateful to them, to all the help that they gave me to do my job as I was working through the system. You can be anything you want to be. You just have to put your mind to it and put your brains to work for you to achieve what the teachers put before you.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's my report for this evening.
Wow. Thank you. What a lovely lady. Okay. I'm gonna try to move on. We're gonna have a public hearing for, reference Monterey Bay Teachers Association sunshine proposal to open negotiations for the 26-27 school year. Doc, actually, I think it's.
Thank you. Good evening, President. Superintendent Difanba, we're trustees. This is the public hearing to open negotiations for 26-27 with Monterey Teachers Association. They've sunshine salary, health and welfare, class size, workday, and safety conditions. This is a re-opener. So that means that we have access to the entire contract, but these are the articles that they've sunshine for this round of negotiations.
All right. Any... Wait, I have to open a public hearing. Sorry. Public hearing's open. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none in person. If you're on Zoom and you'd like to comment on this item, please use the raise hand feature. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. And we'll now move to discuss and approve Monterey Bay Teachers Association sunshine proposal to open negotiations for the 26-27 school year.
As previously mentioned, just asking the board to approve the articles that they've sunshine for this round of negotiations.
Okay. We held a public hearing. Is there any, is there a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Trustee Uchita and a second from Dr. Lusk. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, next is a public hearing. MPUSD sunshine sunshine proposal to open negotiations for Monterey Bay Teachers Association for the 26-27 school year. I will open a public hearing. You're up.
Yep. So this is the district's proposal in terms of the articles that we're sunshining for 26-27 to engage in negotiations with Monterey Bay Teachers Association, salaries, health and welfare benefits, evaluation, leaves, and work year.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Okay, none in person. I'll look at Zoom. No hands raised on Zoom, so I will close public comment. And we will move to discuss and approve MPUSD sunshine proposal to open negotiations with Monterey Bay Teachers Association for the 26-27 school year. Is there a motion?
I'll move to her.
Okay, I have a motion from Trustee Blaskwaz. Is there a second? I have a second from Trustee Ostetl. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, we'll now move to... Thank you. We'll now move to discuss and nominate board member to CSB delegate, CSBA delegate assembly.
Yes, thank you. So each year, board members elect representatives from 21 geographic regions to CSBA's delegate assembly. A board member must be formally nominated by the board in the region or sub-region and may be nominated by their own district or county office. So the nomination must take place at a public board meeting and requires majority vote. So we're bringing this forward for your consideration to see if there's a board member who'd like to be nominated and, and, and serve.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, so I've been doing delegate assembly, I think, every year but one, maybe two, since I've been appointed and elected since 2020. I absolutely love it. I really appreciate learning everything that's happening at a state level, especially as we're focusing on closing the achievement gap and funding from our state to support everything we do within our districts. So I hear there may be some other candidates across the different counties also running, so it will be exciting to see how that unfolds, but I would be honored for your guys' nomination to continue being Region 9B along with some other great individuals we have within our regions and doing some really good work. And so, yeah, so just, you know, a question for that nomination if anyone would like to nominate me. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Lusk, I see your mic on.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to nominate a board member, a vice president, Veronica Maramatis, to continue as our representative or to compete with those that may be recommended by other boards as the representative for 9B.
Okay.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Dr. Lusk and a second from Trustee Uchita. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay. Any comments or from the board on this item? All right.
I would like to just share with the board the great job that my, our 9B trustee from Region 9 has done for us as a region that extends from Santa Cruz, Hollister, San Bonita County, all the way down to this is San Luis Obispo, yes, San Luis Obispo and what have you. It's really important to have bold voices, bold, knowledgeable voices at the delegate assembly level because this is the policymaking body for the California School Boards Association. And it's the body that gives guidance to the governmental relations team on bills that need to be shared or created so that we can support education in California as well as nationally. And we all know where we are from a nation's standpoint. As far as education is concerned, we have some huge tasks ahead of us. And we really need strong, courageous, bold voices to lead the way. And I think that will really be, our vice president will do that along with the collaboration, the collaborative relationships that she has built as our delegate. I think we're ready to do the job that's necessary for the, for the students of California. So just wanted to let you all know that her time there has been very beneficial to Region 9 and to our counties specifically, as well as from a state perspective. So thank you for your commitment and the dedication. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Okay, we have a motion and a second, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Good luck. Okay. Moving on, discuss and approve final nominate nominees for the Monterey County School Boards Association 2026 Excellence in Education, Excellence in Education Award. Dr. Difanba.
Yes, thank you. The Monterey County School Boards Association is asking each district to put their top three forward and then the, the committee will select a winner that will be highlighted at the annual dinner. Attached to the agenda is the list of organizations that were nominated across the county, as well as the criteria sheet. And so want to just emphasize the criteria is an agency, institution, organization, or collaborative entity may be eligible to receive the MCSBA Excellence in Education Award if the opportunity is available, accessible to students countywide, the impact of students, quality of life, life is transformative and significant, the entity highlights an unmet countywide student need, and the entity demonstrates a commitment to exceeding expectations in pursuit of addressing the challenge. So that's a criteria that the School Boards Association asks districts to use as they nominate their, their top three to go back to the School Boards Association Committee.
Okay. Board? Yes, ma'am.
So Special Olympics Northern California.
Okay. We have one. We have one. That list has gotten really big. Wow. I thought that was the end. Yes. Okay, we had one recommendation. Go ahead, trustee Obstedle.
Last year, we gave our top three and tallied and then took the top three and voted again. I don't know if we want to try that route again this year.
I'm okay with that, if the board's okay with that. I don't think we were.
It says it needs to be submitted before January slash February, so that's why we brought it, because it's the last meeting in December. But we could potentially do it at the first meeting in January.
Could we do that with, I make this suggestion to the board, if we could do that and have the names and a sheet that we can write them down on. I would be better off. Go ahead, trustee Blaskas.
Well, based on what you just said, what if we all filled out the blank form that's provided? And then, like, email that to Janet or PK before the January meeting? Because there's a blank form in here for ranking.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
We could, we could then tally it up and then bring it to the board, and then the board would make a final decision in public session.
Okay, so then you would need those forms back by when?
Oh, look, there's the form. Okay, great.
If, maybe Janet, you can email that to us.
Yes.
With some instructions.
Yep, we will email it out with instructions and when to get it back. And then we will prepare the agenda item for the first meeting in January.
Mr. Ash has a.
Which is?
Yes, ma'am. Uh-oh.
When is our meeting?
Our next meeting is going to be, standby. Our next meeting is January thirteenth. Yeah, it has to be a board vote. Okay, then we need to work through this. Okay. So. Let me start over here. Trustee Blaskas, did you have a top three? Can somebody that can write fast, write down? Trustee Blaskas, your top three?
So Special Olympics Northern California, One Starfish Safe Parking, and, oh, what was the other one? Sorry, I didn't have, I don't think I had my third one written down.
Any of y'all don't have three? If you guys don't have three, I'd be back there for you.
We can get to the three, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So could you state your first one again?
Special Olympics Northern California.
Okay, special, all right, got it.
And then the the safe parking, yes. And. Yeah, if you can come back to me on that.
Okay, trustee Obstedle, your top three?
Equine Healing, Palenque Arts, and Wahine.
Whoa. Okay, got it. Got it, thank you. Dr. Lusk, your top three?
Special, Starfish Safe Parking, okay, Special Olympics, and Restorative Justice, I can't remember the name.
Okay. Good. Go ahead, your top three?
So the Equine Healing, Palenque, and then Milpa.
Okay. Milpa. Okay. Trustee Uchita. I almost got, I almost got it out.
My first is the Special Olympics, followed by the point game, and then the Starfish.
Okay, trustee Sanders? Put your mic on, please. They get really mad when you don't.
Yep. The Restorative Justice Partners would be my first, the Palenque Arts the second, and yeah, I'm gonna go with the Read to Me Project for the third.
Read to Me Project, okay. All right, student trustees. I don't think it's on.
My first would be Palenque Arts, second, the Porter Youth Center, and third, Special Olympics.
Okay. Porter Youth Center, okay, go ahead.
I only have two, so one would be Palenque Art and the other one is the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay, awesome. And I'm gonna go with Special Olympics, Palenque, and One Starfish. Okay. And trustee Blaskas, did you find your third? Restorative Justice, okay. So are there clear leaders, Dr. Difanba?
So. Yes, I believe so. In terms of, this is not in ranked order, but just mentioned. Special Olympics, I have been mentioned one, two, three, four, five times. Palenque, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven times. And then One Starfish is, has one, two, three. And Equine Therapy has one, two.
I have Starfish as four.
You have Starfish as four? Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. One Starfish is four, thank you. Restorative Justice Partners has one, two, three. Three.
Okay, all right, so the top three again?
So the top three would be just mentioned, Palenque, then Special Olympics, and then One Starfish are the top three that were mentioned.
Okay, so those are the top three that were mentioned. Are there any reservations? Go ahead, Dr. Difanba.
I can tell you, as your representative, that one of the, that all representatives from each school district and county is gonna be looking at countywide impact. And so, we need to make sure that whoever we are recommending, that each of these programs has countywide impact. And I, I'm not sure who has that, but I want to be able to defend our recommendations, but, so, Dr. Difanba, I mean, and Mrs. Ash, I think are all that we have recommended from a countywide perspective? Have they had impact on a countywide perspective? I know Special Olympics does.
Yeah. Can we scroll to Starfish? I know Equine and Special Olympics does, based on the services and connections that I've had communications with. I'm just not sure about Starfish. I didn't see it. Do they have, I'm trying to recall their presentation, if they've done something in Salinas.
They have.
They have, right?
I recall, as I recall.
Okay.
Yep, I believe they've done in Salinas and then obviously in Seaside.
Does Palenque Arts have countywide impact? I just know it's primarily Seaside, but are there other, can you give, share different cities that Palenque Arts is working in?
As I read this, there's an affiliation with the Arts Council of Monterey County.
Oh, that would make me think that.
Yeah, and it says on the bottom, Riot Range and Monterey County School Districts and Schools.
Okay. Go ahead, trustee Obstedle.
In looking up One Starfish, as much as I love what they do, it does specify on their website Monterey Peninsula.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, I would recommend just voting these top three and then just going from there, if those would like to make a vote. And we can tally it.
Yeah, could you do it in, or recommend in order?
Yes, so we have.
The three that were mentioned most were Palenque, One Starfish, and Special Olympics.
Correct.
But we need to, I think we're supposed to.
We have to submit all three.
Submit all three in the order we would like them to be submitted. Like, the board's first choice would be, their second choice would be.
Based on our votes, we have seven for Palenque, five for Special Olympics, and four for Starfish Parking.
Yeah.
Does anyone want to, as people go with that order, would you like to see something different?
Go ahead, trustee Blaskas.
Oh, I was just gonna, kind of piggybacking off of what Dr. Lusk said, is in regards to their working throughout the county. We established, I believe, Palenque and Special Olympics, and then Starfish, it's on their site, it says Seaside. I think I too have heard of something in Salinas, but I'm thinking, like, having the order go in the way to where we know that it's working throughout Monterey County down to what may be questionable.
And if we did that, we'd still be at Palenque, Special Olympics, and then Starfish Parking.
Okay, you have something, trustee?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it sounded like One Starfish was only operating maybe in, like, the, on the peninsula. I don't know if they're, like, active in the rest of the county, so I don't know if that would affect our decision if we want to still, like, include them in the recommendation. Just a thought.
Go ahead, Dr. Lusk.
I would recommend Special Olympics being our number one. I just, I'm gonna throw that out there. This is my vote.
We could just quickly go one, two, three in each person's order. I'll tally and then just go from there, if that's okay with everyone. At the end of the day, they will be picking one, and other counties and districts are submitting their three too. So they'll, they'll go from there.
Okay, I'm cool with that. You guys want to do it that way? Okay, how about, go ahead, Dr. Lusk.
Before we, could we, could we look at Restorative Justice, that circle, that program? Just, I just want to read it. So, because I recommended it, and I just want to see if it's countywide. Okay, there it is. I do know some, one of the board members who has talked about programs that they do countywide. I don't know her personally, I just know that she has made a presentation about. There it is, K-12 districts in Monterey County. Thank you. There it is. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so our top three. Our top three again were, please?
Palenque, Special Olympics, and One Starfish.
Okay.
Were the top three. So I think Vice President Maramontis suggested if we go around and each do the three, then maybe, maybe that'll clarify, or maybe it'll muddy it more, I don't know.
Could muddy it more, but we can see if we can clear it up. We'll start, how about we'll start on this side this time? Your top three ranked of the three that we have, that are the top.
Okay, my choice would be Special Olympics.
As one? Okay, how about two?
Palenque, and then the third one was.
One Starfish.
The Starfish.
Okay, all right, trustee Yon.
My first one would be Palenque, second, Special Olympics, and third, One Starfish.
Okay. Trustee Sanders?
Mine would be Special Olympics, Palenque, and One Starfish, that would.
Okay, trustee Uchita?
Special Olympics, Palenque, One Starfish.
Okay, vice president?
Palenque, Special Olympics, and One Starfish.
Okay. Dr. Lusk?
Special Olympics. One star. And Restorative Justice.
Okay. Restorative Justice was not top three, was not in our top three. One Starfish, Palenque, and Special Olympics.
Okay, so Special Olympics, One Starfish, and Palenque.
Okay. Trustee Obstedle?
Palenque Arts, Special Olympics, One Star.
Trustee Blaskas?
Special Olympics, Palenque, One Starfish.
Okay, and I'll do Special Olympics, Palenque, and One Starfish. All right, so what's our tally?
In terms of number one votes, I have Special Olympics with one, two, three, four, five, and Palenque with one, two, three, four.
I have Special Olympics as one, two, three, four, five, six, and Palenque as one, two, three.
Okay, you're probably right. So I, I think it's clear, Special Olympics, number one, Palenque, two, and One Starfish, what I think is the, where the board landed.
Okay, is everybody good with that? Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from trustee Uchita and I, Dr. Lusk is the second. Okay, and Dr. Lusk is the second, and then I will ask for public comment. Okay, seeing nobody in person? Seeing nobody in person, I'll go to Zoom and ask Carla Logo. Go ahead.
Thank you. Clarifying question, One Starfish Safe Parking. It does not, from my understanding, does not cover countywide. But my understanding is also that MPUSD has taken on this program, that it is no longer facilitated by a third party. So I'd like that clarification, and that would be important information for the board to know, because you essentially would be nominating the school district that now has taken on that responsibility. Partners for Peace, they are countywide, and I know that they are trying to be an MPUSD, but they have had challenges that have arisen. But I know with the community schools, there's a lot of schools in Seaside that we're gonna bring them on, and so that's another alternative to One Starfish, as well as the Boys and Girls Club. I yield the rest of my time.
Okay. And I can say with certainty that the school district has not taken on One Starfish. It is a separate organization.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, hold on, let me finish this, is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. We have a have, have the guy that made the motion missing.
Oh.
So, um, we cannot take a vote without Mr. Uchita since he made that motion. If I, if I'm remembering Robert's rules correctly. Yes. So we can take a quick thirty second and hope he shows back up. I think he must have just run to the to the other room.
I think we could table it, move on, and then come back.
Okay. So since we have a motion and a second, we're gonna table that item for the moment, and then come back to it once, uh, Mr. Uchita returns to the table. And we will now move to, uh, is he? Wow, buddy. Can't leave the table if you make a motion. We can't continue without you. Bio, bio breaks have to happen once in a while, no problem. Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Uchita and a second from, from Dr. Lusk. Anything further from the board? Okay, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. All right, so now we'll move on to item G, which is discuss and approve the 2025-2026 First Interim Budget Report. Mr. Altmaier.
I'll turn this over to Mr. Altmaier as well as the rest of the items.
All right, good evening, Board. Um, while we're getting the, the presentation pulled up, I'd just like to always take this opportunity to thank the, uh, business office staff and team. Um, they make all of this possible, without them, you know, me standing before you presenting this information would be possible. So I just want to thank them for their hard work and dedication, um, to the school district. Um, they work tirelessly year-round, especially when these reports are due, so thank you, a big shout out to the business department. All right. Okay. Perfect. Okay, so this evening, we are gonna, uh, go over a few items, um, we're gonna take a look at, um, um, overview of the state fiscal outlook. We actually won't spend much time on that, um, there's not a lot of new information at this point to go over. Um, but we are gonna go over the district's multi-year fiscal outlook at the first interim, um, a brief budget analysis and some trends, and we'll talk about some next steps. Um, so just as a reminder, as, as I always do, this is a continuous process, the, the district's budget isn't done with adoption, it goes through a cycle all year long. So we are in the first, uh, interim, uh, reporting period, which is, uh, starts in November, and we come to the board, it has to be board-approved no later than December. Um, and here, again, here's the, the outline of that, so the board adopts a budget each year July first, um, unaudited actuals come before the board by September fifteenth of each year. Uh, there's an independent audit, um, that's being concluded now, that will come back to the board for review, um, in January or February of this year. The first interim report, which the board is reviewing tonight, which is fiscal activity for this current school year through October thirty-first. That's due by December fifteenth, and then the second interim by March fifteenth. And then, um, LCAP and budget adoption by June thirtieth. Let me just do it, say, yeah, thank you. Um, for interim certifications, there are three, um, designations, there's a positive, qualified, and negative. A positive certification means that you can meet all your obligations, qualified means that you may not be able to, and negative means you are not able to. The district is certifying a positive certification on the interim budget. Next slide. Uh, so as I mentioned, we are able to file a positive certification, which means that we will be able to meet our minimum fiscal obligations over a multi-year period, which is the current fiscal year plus two fiscal years into the future. Uh, it reflects all major fiscal activity from July first through October for, thirty-first of the current fiscal year. And it does include a new agreement with MBTA Bargaining for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, and this will be revised again based on the governor's January budget proposal that we'll get, um, and that will be reflected in the second interim that we present to the board in March. Uh, uh, key factors in, in what goes into, um, budgets in general, just like to point this out, the budgets are built on, built on assumptions and projections. Um, we, we do this based on the information that we have at the moment, um, but it, it's subject to change, and it does change often. Um, but the key factors, we're looking at enrollment, attendance, or unduplicated pupil percentages, uh, local control funding formula increases or decreases. Um, you know, positions, um, retirement system increases, special ed costs, collective bargaining agreements, um, and then other economic factors. So here's, uh, the first look at the, um, uh, the first set of slides that we'll go over, looking at the district's, uh, multi-year out fiscal outlook. So the first, we're just gonna take a look at the, both the unrestricted and restricted funds, Fund O-one combined. Um, so you can see in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, we did start this fiscal year at about forty-seven million dollars in a beginning fund balance. Uh, we're projecting about a hundred and eighty-nine million dollars in revenues, uh, with about two hundred and five, uh, million dollars in expenditures. You'll notice that there's a sixteen million dollars in red, so we are projected to deficit spend this year of about sixteen million dollars. Um, and you factor that out over the next two years, um, we are projected to continue to deficit spend by a lower amount. And I'll go into some of the assumptions and why that's decreasing and what some of the next steps are. Um, but currently, it's projected at fourteen or fifteen million in twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Again, when you're looking at unrestricted and restricted, some of that's okay, because we are spending down some restricted one-time dollars. Next slide. So just looking at the Fund O-one unrestricted funding, again, we started the year with thirty-four million dollars in our fund balance, beginning fund balance. Projected revenues of about a hundred and five million with expenditures of a hundred and fifteen. Um, again, we are projected deficit spending of about ten million dollars, uh, reducing to a little bit less than ten million dollars in twenty-six, twenty-seven, and then down to six million dollars in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Next slide. Um, I, I show this each year, it's just kind of a breakdown, um, this is a hundred dollars this time, not a dollar, but, um, the, the point is, for every hundred dollars that we get, you can see that the majority of that, about eighty percent, goes to staff, and, and that's the primary expenditures that we have as a district. The other remaining amount is things like books and supplies, service, and operating expenses. Um, this is just a, a, a visual representation of what the budget looks like. So we are in a structural deficit, which just means that we are not, um, our revenues are not keeping pace with our expenditures. So we, each year over year, we are projected to spend more than we're bringing in, um, in revenue. As you can see, that does bring down our ending fund balance, and we are required to keep a minimum of three percent in reserves. Um, so I'll, I'll bring some information, um, talk about some next steps, how we may potentially be able to address this in the future. Excellent. Um, so the key assumptions, the takeaways from the, this interim report, so this does factor in reductions of four million. And so I should say, um, and I'm gonna show you a larger multi-year projection in, in a moment. But the, the recommendation is to reduce at least four million dollars in the upcoming fiscal year in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, we are, we're projecting out loss of ADA, um, and, and declining unduplicated pupil percentage. Um, and then we do have increased costs, this is twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we're looking at further into twenty-seven, twenty-eight, an additional three million dollars in reductions. Um, we continue to have declining enrollment, so we are losing, uh, students year over year, and we are, unduplicated pupil percentage has declined. Okay, so this is, uh, this is the multi-year projection, a little bit more of a detailed look, and I show this because it does show actually a, a fourth year that we're not required to put on the interim report, but to think it's important for the board to understand, what does it look like if we continue on the trend? Or what is, what is it that we have to do as a district based on the current, um, fiscal situation the district's in? So you can see on this, we built the budget on a, on a projection of a reduction in twenty-six, twenty-seven of about two million dollars. Um, and that ramping up to an additional three million in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and then the additional three million in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. So it's a total of eight million dollars that we would need to reduce in order to just have the minimum of three percent in reserves. Um, so the recommendation that was earlier was that accelerating that, um, so that we're not waiting for that fourth year, uh, making some, accelerating some of those reductions. Um, and I'll explain why in a moment. You can go to the next slide. Uh, so I wanted to spend some time giving the, the board kind of an analysis of what's happened, um, in California, um, with education budgets, but, but really kind of focusing in on NPUSD. And the way that I'm gonna do that is through the lens of looking at prior to COVID, all the way through now. Um, and I think that's an important, COVID was a very important milestone for lots of different reasons, and, um, that, we're still feeling the impacts of that today. So during, uh, COVID, so starting in twenty eighteen, nineteen, uh, the year prior to COVID, um, the, we, we, if you're looking at staffing levels and revenue. Um, but the district did receive a, a significant influx in one-time dollars, so districts across the, the state did receive the similar funding, funding. Um, it's based on your enrollment, so for our district, we received about sixty million dollars of one-time funding that came into the district. Um, that's quite a bit, if you look at our unrestricted budget, we're only about a hundred and ten million dollars annually. So getting sixty million dollars, um, is quite a bit of money if you're looking at the, the total district budget. Um, this didn't all come in at once, it came in over a couple of years, um, but the funding had restrictions on it, it wasn't unrestricted. We had certain restrictions on how it could, would be spent, um, and it did have expirations on, on the funding. All of this funding has been spent, so the, the, there is no funding from this particular one-time dollars available to us anymore, we spent them by the deadlines. Um, but I wanted to illustrate that this money did come in, and because eighty percent of our budget is focused on people, it makes sense that a lot of this money went to hire staff during that time. A lot of it was, uh, uh, absolutely necessary, and some of those services continue to this day, even though the one-time funding has run out. Next slide. Now I realize this is on this project, this is green probably wasn't the best choice, it's kind of hard to see. But hopefully you have the, the, it's not red, but it's kind of hard, maybe I should do like, I should have just done blue. But if we can look at, um, special education for a moment, this continues to be a, a significant cost driver for the district as well. And this isn't unique to NPUSD, um, this is across the state and, and in fact, across the entire country. Um, but what you're looking at here is a trend, again, continuing with our theme, looking at pre-COVID to where we are now. Um, if you look at our student, our special education enrollment in, uh, twenty eighteen, nineteen, uh, we were less than thirteen hundred students. So we had one thousand two hundred and sixty-six students, um, who were designated, um, in that category. Um, our total expense, our contribution, so the contribution that we have to make from the general fund to cover the special expenses was thirteen million dollars in eighteen, nineteen. Um, so if you look at the total cost of special education, um, including the funding that we receive from, um, all sources, plus the contribution the district has to make, the total cost to operate sped in eighteen, nineteen was about, uh, eighteen or eighteen point seven million dollars, um, for one thousand two hundred and sixty-six students. You can see the trends there, there was a gradual in, um, increase in students year over year. So in nineteen, twenty, we had about, uh, twelve hundred and, um, thirty-three students, that was a, kind of the outlier COVID year where we saw a dip. Um, but it passed that, you can see that it accelerated in twenty-twenty-one, uh, thirteen hundred and twenty-six students, thirteen hundred and thirty-four students in twenty-two, one twenty-two. Twenty-two, twenty-three, you had fifteen hundred students. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we had, um, over sixteen hundred, one thousand six hundred and fifty-seven. All the way to now, where we're at the first interim, we're close to, we're at one thousand eight hundred and fifty-two students. If you look at the costs, uh, the contribution I'll focus on for a moment, uh, we started with a contribution in eighteen, nineteen of about thirteen million dollars. If you, if you fast forward to now, that contribution's gone to about twenty-seven million dollars. Total cost of operate sped, um, went from eighteen point seven million dollars to thirty-five point three million dollars. Um, so really, the student enrollment in special, uh, for our special needs students has increased, the population's increased. So we've seen a forty-six percent growth in student numbers, um, but the costs are outpacing the, the stu, increase in students. So our costs have increased by almost a hundred percent, by, by eighty-eight percent. So it's not only are we having more students who are qualifying for special education and those costs associated with that, um, but also our costs are increasing faster than the student enrollment. And as you can see here illustrated, that we don't receive nearly enough funding to cover the costs, um, from the federal government, from all the other sources. So our contribution from the unrestricted general fund has increased quite a bit over those, the course of those years. Excellent. The, the other factor as I mentioned is the influx of those one-time dollars, uh, from the one-time dollars that we received through COVID. Um, if we look at prior to the COVID year, our enrollment was about nineteen, I'm sorry, one, nine thousand six hundred and thirty-six students. Um, if you fast forward to today, our enrollment is nine thousand two hundred and sixty-one students. So we've lost about four percent of our, uh, for students, three hundred and forty, three hundred and fifty students over that period of time. The outlier here, though, is our district staffing levels. If you look at our district staffing from eighteen, nineteen, total district staff was, uh, one thousand two hundred and thirty-five total FTE. Now in twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, we're at one thousand three hundred and forty-six. So that's, that's up nine percent. So our enrollment's going down, we have less students, but our staffing levels have been adjusted accordingly, in fact, they've gone the other way. We've increased staff by about a hundred and eleven since, um, eighteen, nineteen, the, the, the year prior to COVID. Um, and so really what that says is that we did, we did hire additional staffing during that time, um, but we haven't kept pace with the reductions of the one-time funding with staffing levels, and it's not keeping pace with our overall declining enrollment. Excellent. Um, and then the last trend that we're seeing, an unfortunate trend, is, um, an increase in unexpected one-time costs. So this year or last year, you're all familiar with the, the McSick deficit payment, um, that we had to pay of about eight, um, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. That was an unexpected cost, that was paid in twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, we, the school district was part of the school's excess liability fund, and that's a prior, before, uh, the current insurance carrier. This was the insurance carrier that provided coverage, um, for the district. As part of being in that pool, we have coverage from that period of time. So to give you an example of, of what that would look like, is if we have a, a claim that came in, you know, during the period of time we had coverage with this insurance provider, they would be required to cover us for that claim. Um, because of the increase in AB two eighteen claims across the state, part of the, um, contract, the agreement that we had with this is that they could come back at the member agencies and assess, um, um, make an assessment based on new claims that were coming in. So in twenty-four, twenty-five, even though we're no longer with this insurance carrier, we were assessed two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars that we had to pay. In twenty-five, twenty-six, we were assessed seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars that we will have to pay. Um, and then in addition, we did have one AB two eighteen claim that we had to pay eight hundred thousand dollars on in twenty-five, twenty-six. So that, that in just two years were, was about two point six million dollars in unexpected costs. So this is a really important factor on why we have reserves. If we didn't have significant reserves or fund balances, we wouldn't have a way to weather these unti, these, um, unforeseen one-time costs. Um, and so just, just I wanted to illustrate that, this is, we're not out of the woods with lots of these things either. Um, I suspect this will continue to happen, especially with the self-insurance assessments. Um, I, I couldn't project for you what that's going to be, but you can see the trend there, just year over year, the increases, um, in those assessments. So what, what are the next steps? Um, so we're gonna have to continuously monitor staffing levels and adjust accordingly to our enrollment trends. Um, and we'll develop and assess a fiscal stabilization plan. Um, the goal would be, would be to bring that back to the board, um, in twenty-twenty-six, in January twenty-twenty-six. Um, after the governor's budget announcement, that will give us some time to put together a robust plan, factoring in the most relevant information that we have from, uh, the governor's January budget proposal. Um, and as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, targeting at least eight million dollars of reductions over the course of the next three years, uh, with four million of that beginning in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Uh, so January budget proposal, we'll, we'll review in January with the board. Um, and February, March, um, we're continuing to have the, the LCAP and budget development. Uh, March, you will see the, the, uh, second interim report, and, uh, April, uh, the annual budget LCAP, uh, development and adoption, and then be bringing back ultimately in June for the first read in the passage of the, uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, budget. And that is it. Ready for any questions?
Okay. Board, are there any questions on this item? Sure, Mr. Uchita, go ahead.
Anyway, I'll just stick up your lap. While I was attending at the CSBA conference, um, I was in a.
It's not working. Can you hand him your mic? Because they're gonna get mad.
They can get mad, okay. I was just bringing my old coach's voice. Anyway, um, attending a CSBA, um, um, what do you call it? Anyway, there was talk about changing ADA into enrollment. Is there talk amongst the CBOs in, you know, that you're familiar with that? How would that affect us if we were to go to enrollment in lieu of, um, ADA?
Yeah, so there's, there's been talk of that for a. Yeah, so there's, there's been talk of that for a while. There hasn't been any really significant movement on changing that. But it would definitely, it would be a positive improvement, because right now we're funding only about 95% of the students. So if it was on enrollment base, we would be funded on the, if they implemented this strictly on enrollment, it would be 100% versus just the 95 on the average daily attendance.
So I think we as, as trustees and voters, and we need to contact people in making those decisions, that how important it is for districts like us that can fairly gain revenue via a more fair assessment.
Also, just to chime in, it disproportionately disadvantages districts where kids are overcoming a lot of barriers to get to school, right? Whether that's health, transportation, or whatnot. So higher, higher barriers means often higher chronic absenteeism, and then therefore, you know, lower funding in that ADA model.
All right. Any other question, Dr. Les?
Not a question, but a comment. I'm grateful to share with you that our superintendent will be a part of the superintendent advisory council for CSBA, and will be championing that for, for us, along with other superintendents. Because this is really, there's a critical need for us to really look at this and, and use every avenue possible to gain the most funds to support our children. And so we are going to just kind of wait for reports to, and, and know that our superintendent will be very, a bold voice in really moving that forward. But, oh, he's picking up something. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Any other, go ahead, Vice President.
Thank you again for the presentation. I really enjoy the dollar bill sign to really show, you know, where the money is at and what we have, and unfortunately, what we do, we do not have. So I really always want to just encourage us to continue, you know, sharing the messaging and showing how we are trying to come together in solidarity to find solutions, as this is more than just an MPUSD issue, it is a statewide issue. And at Delegate Assembly that I attended last week, it was actually very insightful to see what the Legislative Analyst Office had to report in regards to state funding, over $20 billion in operational deficit is come, in the coming years. And just federal programs that are getting cut, like Medi-Cal, over 40%, will have a big impact on where the state is going to have to backfill those federal cuts and that funding. And Proposition 98 has long time been promised for us to continue the funding, and it just has not. So just as we have not been able to receive that funding, it trickles down to everything that we do. So just really excited to hear about our superintendent being a part of CSBA, and then just continue that advocacy at a statewide level. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Les.
I'm so appreciative of the process that we use in gathering information from all stakeholders for our LCAP development. And I'm looking forward to, you know, I know we meet at schools and the input from all that attend is really appreciated, and I, I know that we're going to continue to improve that process so that we can get more community members to join us, and parents to join us. And so what I'd like to ask in advance, Mr. President, is that we get additional talking points or flyers that we perhaps can reach out and share with our, our database, my community groups, and so that we can increase the numbers. Last question now that I have, as it relates to LCAP. So I know we expend all that we place in each category of the LCAP. And I'm just wondering, I know we expended, but is there just a tiny bit left over at any time? That's a question that I've been asked, Dr. Difimbo.
Yeah, so there, there are at times, we try not to, but there are times when we have certain positions that are in the LCAP that then aren't filled, for example. So then you, you don't spend as much, and we, we do try to shift where we can to make sure that we're expending all, all the funding. But there, there are times when you don't hit the mark exactly, primarily because of vacancies.
Thank you. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Okay, so we will go now to public comment. Seeing nobody in person, we'll go to Carla Lobo. Go ahead.
Thank you. Can I get the timer on, on the screen? One of my comments was cut short, and I time all my comments to be exactly three minutes. So can I see the, the timer up? Thank you. I appreciate the positive certification and acknowledges the very real structural deficits the district is facing in the coming years. I want to focus my comments on special education, long-term sustainability, and how budget decisions align with our legal and moral obligations first. It notes that special education enrollment has increased by 46%, while special education costs have increased by 88%, far outpacing both enrollment growth and revenue. The trend is alarming, but it also raises important questions. Clearly answered, I'd like them clearly answered on the record tonight. What specific drivers are behind this 88% cost increase? Non-public school or out-of-district placements, transportation costs, contracted services such as behavioral specialists, aides, or mental health providers, or legal cost settlements, and compensatory services tied to compliance issues? If you can elaborate more, if any of these are contributing to that 88%? Report shows that unrestricted contributions to restricted programs, largely special education, are increasing each year. How much of the projected structural deficit is directly attributable to special education contributions? And how is this district planning to manage that growth without reducing services or violating students' IEPs? Third, staffing trends are, trends raise serious equity concerns since 1819 enrollment has declined by 375 students, while staffing has increased by 111 positions. How many of those positions are special education staff? And are they classroom-based or administrative? Additionally, are case loads for special education teachers, psychologists, and service providers currently within best practice and legal limits? The presentation also says that all-time, one-time funds have been spent. Where any, were any one-time funds used to cover ongoing special education needs? And if so, what is now replacing those funds in the out-years? Finally, the district moves towards a physical stabilization, planning, targeting $8 million in reductions. I want to ask clearly, can the board commit? Can the board commit that cost-cutting will not result in increased class sizes, reduced services, or delayed evaluations for students with disabilities? And will the district share a public breakdown of special education spending and projections before major reductions are proposed? Special education is not optional. It is a federal-protected and deeply tied to student dignity and family trust. Thoughtful planning here will determine whether this district stabilizes responsibly or shifts the burden onto its most vulnerable students. I look forward to clear answers and continued transparency. I yield the rest of my time. 11 seconds.
Thank you. We'll prepare some answers to those. If, if you have them written out, if you would email me, then I can make sure that we answer them in a timely manner. Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. This is discuss and approve. Is there a motion? Turn your mic on.
Mr. President, I move approval of the budget report.
I'll second.
There, okay.
Okay. Having a motion from Dr. Lesk and a second from, that was Trustee Offstettl, thank you. Anything further from the board? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, and moving on to H, discuss and approve report on use of developer fees for the 2425, for, for 2024 and 2025, and approve resolution 25/26-09 on use of developer fees.
Thank you. So this, this is a report, while the presentation's being pulled up, that we do annually. It has to be adopted and reviewed by the board no later than December 26th of each year. And so the district is a district that does levy developer fees. And so as part of that, I'll go over, you know, what we're collecting, how we're collecting it, and then the, the costs that we, so far. It's in the, another presentation. There you go. Thank you, Sei. Let me try this again. Okay. So as I mentioned, the district does assess developer fees on new construction and residential and commercial properties in our jurisdiction. So as of August 2024, those rates are $5.17 per square foot for residential and $0.84 per square foot for commercial. Those are subject to go up every even year, so the, the state will assess those and determine if they need to, to change. So the next one will be in 2026. And then again, the amounts are determined by, via developer fee justification analysis. So if the rates are increased, we will go through a developer fee justification analysis and bring that back to the board. And methodology of maximizing fees established by the state laws and state allocation board. It's important for us to engage in this process, because it makes us eligible for certain state matching funds for facilities projects. So the funds that we collect, they are maintained in a special fund just for developer fees, Fund 25. And the government code does require annual board adoption and audit review of the developer fee utilized, utilized by the district. And also the annual accounting to be completed, made available to the public no later than December 26th. So here's a look of the financial activity for Fund 25, the developer fees. So as of July 1st, the balance in the account was about $10.9 million. Fees collected in 2425 totaled about $3.4 million. There are times where we do refund fees if permits are rescinded and that work isn't completed, so we do refund fees for those cases. In this case, we did refund about $1,500 or $1,600 in fees. Interest earned in the year was about $358,000, and we spent about $1.9 million. The majority of that spend, and it's attached to the report, you'll see, the majority of that is in either new portables that we placed at Marina Vista Elementary School, and portable lease payment. So that's the, the primary expenses in that $1.9 million. There was a fair market of value adjustment. This is just adjustment that we were required to do based on what we received from auditing guidelines. And then so the total beginning balance, ending balance, I should say, ending balance is $11.7 million. And again, you can see that we do project that we will continue to receive about $2.4 million annually. And the last thing I'll just mention, the resolution that's attached that the board will be voting on just indicates that we are following this process, the fees are spent in accordance to government code.
Okay. Board, are there any questions on this item?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Are there any cases in which developer fees are waived, not, not refunded, but waived altogether on a project?
There, there are certain times, specifically around accessory dwelling units, there is, there are some provisions in there if they're under a certain threshold for fee. We don't, we don't charge developer fees on those. Those are the primary circumstances. For development or residential, there are cases where we can negotiate directly with the developer in lieu of developer fees. But those would be the primary cases, we would, we'd have those conversations.
Are, are there any examples of the kind of discretionary exemptions?
Those would be the discretionary, right? So either in lieu of negotiating or in, in ed code to carve out for accessory, the ADUs not charging for, if it's, if it's a remodel of an existing space, those don't, don't generate developer fees, it's really adding square footage.
Okay, I, I think I meant, are there any examples of, say, a larger scale exemption than just ADUs? I mean, if there hasn't been much development in the district in a while, so.
Yes, I could not recall any other exemptions that have been made to, for developer fees.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Questions from the public? Okay, seeing no questions from the public, we will now, I will now ask for a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion from Trustee Yuchida, and a second from Trustee Offstettl, right? Okay. Just got to make sure. Okay. All, anything further? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Six to zero. Okay. Next item is discuss and approve accepting the USAC award to replace the district's outdated firewall system.
Thank you. So the district does participate in E-Rate, which is a federal program that does cover certain costs, eligible costs for network connectivity or IT infrastructure that are related to telecommunications. In this case, this is a firewall that sits in the main data center, so this is kind of the main protection, filtering all traffic coming into the district from the internet and going out. The last time we replaced a firewall, I think it's, we're going on about 10 years, so that's quite old in, in technology terms. So our, we have applied for funding through the E-Rate program. They are funding, this total cost of the projects is about $300,000. E-Rate is funding about $107,000 of that, so the remaining portion would be the, the district's contribution to that. So we're leveraging that funding, and this firewall will get us similar lifespan than we've had on the current one.
Okay, any questions from the board? All right, how about questions from the public? All right, seeing none, I'll come back to the board. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, motion from Trustee Velasquez.
I'll second.
And a second from Trustee Offstettl. Anything further? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, discuss and approve the sale of decommissioned MacBooks that no longer meet district standards.
So we're, we're in the process, so several months ago, the board did approve a purchase for a refresh cycle for staff devices in the district. Those are MacBook computers. So we've gone through that process, we're at the very end of that rollout. We've, we've hit every school site, department, we're just wrapping up that now. So as we recover those devices, the older devices, the ones that we are, that are being returned are about seven years old at this point. So we are going to, we would like to leverage any kind of available dollars that we have left in those devices. They, they do get returned to us in various different states of conditions, so we are working with an outside agency. What they will do is any other devices they'll return, they'll assess them, and then provide us a dollar value on those devices based on their assessment. So at the high end of that, it's up, we're projecting we'll give them about 750 devices. At the high end, they would, we could recoup about $150,000. On the low end of that, no lower than around $60,000, $60,000 that we could recoup from those old devices.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Yes, ma'am. Trustee Velasquez.
So I was reading that the entity that I guess we're selling them back to, it, it didn't say like what they do with them. So do they ever donate them? Do they recycle them? What do they do with the end product once we?
Most of the time, they'll recycle them. So they'll take components and recycle them, either for the, the materials that they're built out of. The, the devices that we're returning, most of them aren't going to be usable for resale. And they're, they're like, at this point, they're, they're already seven years old on, on a device, so they don't, they don't have a lot of resale value. It's mostly for, for recycling purposes.
What about donating them to, like how, there's like Loaves, Fish and Computers in Salinas, and you know, a lot of those devices are older. So like donating them to, I guess, community organizations like that? Do you know if they do that at all?
We have worked with them in the past, so they used to be a part, as part of our e-waste program, they would come and pick up e-waste. So we, we've, we've used them over the years several times to, we've, old devices that no longer function, things like that, we have used Loaves and Fishes. I, I'm not, I don't know that this particular company donates those. I think it, most of what they do is the refurbishment or recycling of the devices.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? All right, how about questions from the public on this item? All right, seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from Trustee Velasquez, and a second from... Okay. I have a motion from Trustee Velasquez and a second from Vice President Miramontes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Six, zero. Okay. Next, discuss and approve installation of security cameras and access control system at the staff housing complex located at twenty-three hundred Garden Road.
I believe this is the last item for the evening. So the, the, the apartment buildings that we purchased that were, as of now, actively getting people into. Part of the, there were, there were some upgrades that were necessary in those, in those buildings, primarily around safety. The doors, when we took possession, the design of the doors, the exterior doors, they weren't locked. So for better safety, we decided that it would, it would be better to have some sort of locking mechanism on those. To facilitate that, we're using a key card access control system, which makes the most sense when you're, you're trying to pass things out to people who are coming and going out of apartment buildings. So this would be to secure all the exterior doors using the access control system. In addition, for security, cameras placed around the building and in common areas. This is about twelve cameras throughout, plus the access control hardware and all the backend cabling and all the infrastructure that needs to go into doing that. Our RET department is coordinating that, coordinating that with outside contractors. The, the work is actually, they're in process of getting everything lined up. There's a little bit of a lead time on some of that, but that's the, the, the total cost that are going into this is, is primarily access control cabling and camera system.
Okay. Any questions from the board on this? Go ahead, Trustee Uchita.
Again, I don't have a microphone, but I'll speak real loud. Is this gonna be bond money funded?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments or questions from the board? All right. How about comments or questions from the public? Okay, I see Andrea Gonzalez. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to ask if this is further gonna delay the move-in date as I've been talking to the leasing agency. They have said they approved a lease and sent it to the district but have not gotten a response back from the district about whether or not they're approving the lease. I was wondering if this is due to these put, being put in and we're just waiting for it to be put in before prospective tenants can be moved in. As I've been told, I cannot sign a lease yet because it has not been approved by the district. And then I give up the rest of my time.
Thank you. Well, we'll have to look into the other delay issue, but this, this would not delay the move-in process. This will happen concurrently to that.
Okay. Any other public comment on this item? All right. Okay. We'll go Carla Lobo. Go ahead.
Um, just, just to clarify, the total amount that would be coming off, coming out of the, the bond is two hundred, two hundred and four thousand, or it's not gonna exceed? Do we have an exact number? I, I've looked through the attachments and there's various numbers on there. There's one forty-two thousand, and I'm assuming that's for the actual Cisco equipment. And, and just to piggyback on the last commenter's question, I too know of a couple of individuals that already gave their notice at their current places and still have no set move-in date. The last communication they got was that their applications still need to go and be approved through the county of Mon- I mean, through the city of Monterey because they're below market rent rate. And so that's concerning because if they've already given notice and that notice comes, comes up, they're gonna be homeless. So I, I'd really like the district to really take a look at that because there's several individuals that have gotten that from the property management company stating that it could delay even longer because the city of Monterey has to review all those applications because they are below market rent rate. I yield the rest of my time.
Yeah. Thank, thank you for that. We'll definitely follow up on that. I might, I don't have an answer for that now, but that's something we'll follow up on soon. And the, the other question is, the, yes, it is two hundred and four thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars. That is the cost.
Okay. Any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll come back to the board. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion from Trustee Uchita?
I'll second.
Second from Trustee Vice President Miramontes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to consent agenda. Items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and are acted on by the Board of Education in one motion. There's no discussion of these items before the board vote unless a member of the board, staff, or public requests specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent agenda. It is understood that the administration recommends approval of all consent items. Each item on the consent agenda approved by the members of the governing board shall be deemed to have been considered in full and adopted as recommended. Board, are there any items that you would like to pull for further discussion? All right. How about public? Carla Lobo, go ahead.
I'd like to put, uh, pull G. G as in girl. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Got it. We'll act on that one separately. So then, board, is there a, actually, let me ask this question. Are there any other items from the public, from folks from the public that they would like pulled? All right. Seeing none. Then, board, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda other, other than item G?
I'll move to approve.
Okay. Got a motion from Dr. Lusk and a second from Trustee Velasquez. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Consent agenda is adopted, uh, other than item G. Now we'll move to item G, approve and ratify multiple contracts for services rendered to MPUSD under educational services, Dr. Dif- I'm sorry. Carla Lobo, what question did you have on that item?
I didn't have a question. I had a public comment. Can I have the clock? Thank you. I want to be clear that I support investment in special education, speech, OT, communications tools, staff training are essential. But as a parent who has spent the last eight months trying to secure legally required support for my son, I must address a critical issue this board cannot overlook. Services on paper mean nothing if students cannot access them in real time. Tonight, you're being asked to approve new contracts under the assumption that systems are functioning. I'm here to state clearly, there is a breakdown in implementation, oversight, and accountability. Negligence at the department level becomes negligence at the district level. And when the district fails to act, that responsibility ultimately falls on this board. Approving services is not enough. You must ensure those services are delivered, monitored, and accessible to students who rely on them, including my son and the many others whose parents have contacted me. As of today, more than seventy-five families have reached out with similar concerns and many are prepared to pursue collectively a legal action should the systemic failures continue. I'm asking you, I'm asking you, each and every one of you board members, to take immediate ownership of compliance and oversight, not as a courtesy, but as a legal obligation. If the district can approve contracts worth nearly a hundred thousand per provider, then it must also ensure that students like my son are not left waiting months for basic supports. I must reiterate that since July, I have repeatedly documented my son's need for a one-on-one support despite fifty-eight evaluations confirming the need. I hope the board chooses to address this proactively, but if meaningful action does not occur, we are prepared to pursue enforcement, including due process, OCR complaints, ADA violations, and coordinated legal remedies because our children do not get this time back. And accountability starts here with you, all of you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Is there a motion on, for item G on the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Trustee Sanders and a second from Trustee Oftedle? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Now, communication from board members. Board communication is an opportunity for board members to share with the public events, activities, and other communications they deem relevant to the public. It is understood that the items raised under the board communication section are not on the adopted agenda and therefore no further discussion will occur on any items shared by board members. I'm gonna start on my left. Go ahead.
Um, just, um, just again, um, the Holiday Night Rally at C-Side High School, please attend. It is a community-wide event and it goes for, like, it's a Thanksgiving slash Christmas theme. So for families that didn't really get to, or didn't have the chance to, um, celebrate it, this is kind of like a time where we all come together and celebrate it. And yeah, thank you.
All right. Trustee Hott.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank, uh, Dr. Lusk for the guidance and kind words. It like, it, it meant a lot to me and like, it hit really hard. And you like, you inspire me like very much and seeing the video and kind of like, I didn't know much about your background until the video. And it was just very inspiring to see and, um, everything. So that's all I have.
All right. Trustee Sanders, communication.
Uh, work is ongoing for the ninety-day sprint implementation of the capital fund that I mentioned in the last meeting. So, uh, keep your eyes and ears peeled over the coming months. Twenty-twenty-six should be the year that we start pulling it together, millions of dollars for workforce housing in the county. That includes MPUSD teachers.
All right. Great. Trustee Uchita?
I got a green light.
Oh, my gosh.
I, I pressed enough buttons. Uh, I just wanna thank, um, our board for allowing me to attend the CSBA conference. And I too, along with everyone here, owe so much to Dr. Lusk for her decade-long commitment to our kids. And she is so respected throughout, um, not only our community, but the state. And it brought so much attention to our district and, and just thank you so much for all of us. We go way back, so. Yes. And then I also attended the funeral service for Ms. Rucker. It was a beautiful, um, event, um, at the Catholic Church. And it's such a powerful person who we all will be at a loss for. For so much that she did for, for everyone and just, just a driving force. And if you got to know her, we were fortunate, so. Thank you.
Okay. Vice President?
I'll keep it short. I did my best to try to give my updates throughout our board meeting based on my experience at CSBA's Annual Education Conference and the delegate assembly that we had two days prior of that. So just really appreciate everybody's time, efforts, echoing, um, Dr. Lusk and all the efforts and, and just things you've laid out for us to follow and to continue to be on the shoulders of so, shoulders and always try to do better based on, on your inspirations. I really appreciate that. And yeah, so no- nothing else more. Actually, I'm just really excited to have seen so many MPUSD individuals at Annual Education Conference, and I hope that continues. Thank you.
All right. Dr. Lusk, communications.
Thank you all so very much. And I just am so excited. Dr. Difinbaugh and, oh my goodness, Mercy and all of us. Golden Bell! Golden Bell! Golden Bell doing my presidency. That made me so proud that, um, to see my district really recognized for a program that is really closing that achievement gap one day at a time, one step at a time. And it's really reaching our most vulnerable students at the ground level, and that's what I'm so proud of. It was great to travel the state and to see other programs in other districts. But to know that MPUSD is doing that level of exemplary work is really something that I celebrate. I am in love with MPUSD. You are my family. And I am just, there's nothing I won't do to support each one of you. So please know that and call on me anytime. I have one more year as past president, and I am excited about that. But we'll be tapping the shoulders. Yeah. And I want to just say, right down there is a lady that was showcased. How many of you saw, um, Trustee Velasquez? So see, so, so MPUSD has been really represented well, even at the national, the federal level. So they continue to use, uh, Trustee.
And I haven't seen it. I haven't seen it.
You haven't seen it yet? Oh, my goodness. Her comments related to the needs of students, in particular, special education students, was really heard clearly at the federal level a couple of years ago, and it continues to resonate today. We know the work is needed at that level, and she really did a great job of messaging that to those that, uh, and continues to do it, to those that were there then and continues to do it. So thank you. Thank you, representing her. Trustee, appreciate you.
Okay. Trustee Oftedle?
I too was at CSBA and to use, uh, Trustee Sanders' analogy, it was like a water hose of, of information. But what, uh, a treat and it was to see Dr. Lusk on stage and, um, just hearing the comments throughout the conference about MPUSD because of your great leadership and how lucky we are to, um, follow your lead, but also how warm you are about, uh, walking beside us. Um, I think that's, uh, a great testament to your leadership and your mentorship, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I also wanted to, um, commend the Monterey Drama Department for Radium Girls. It was a very good production. Um, just a tragic story. The book is excellent if you haven't read it. But they did a wonderful job. And I wanted to also commend the, um, Monterey Science Fair, um, participants that all moved on to the county level. And since, um, I don't think we got an invite to the Science Fair at Monterey High, or I didn't see it, could I request that we get an invite to the county science fair in case we can make it? Thank you.
That was, that would be great.
Trustee Velasquez?
Yes, I have to, uh, second all the comments about CSBA. I enjoyed all the sessions that I took. And it still feels like a water hose, so. This is my third, third year. It still feels like a water hose. But I did, I enjoyed all the sessions and like Trustee Oftedle, it was really cool hearing MPUSD, like, people that I've never met before, like talking about our district and just walking by, you know, snacking like, wow, they're talking about us. This is kind of fun. Not to say that, you know, that hadn't happened before, but I guess it's more so this year. So, um, that was really cool. Uh, in regards to announcements, um, I did finally get some information from Special Olympics Northern California, so I will send that over to PK. Basketball is starting in, um, January, so, um, I'll get that sent over. And if you want to send it out to the parents to let them know, because I believe the registration's still open. And then after that, I believe is, um, I want to say golf is after that. But basketball starts in January. And then also, I'm gonna participate in my first genealogical, um, conference. So it's called the Ancestor Roundup. Um, I guess this is the forty-sixth year that it's being held. And it's basically gonna be, um, speakers that are gonna give information in regards to studying your genealogy. And so I will be doing the class on African-American freedmen, um, with Aldra Walton. So that is gonna be January twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-six. So once I get the, uh, flyer information from that, I will also forward that to PK. And then, I'm trying to think. There was one other thing. Oh, can't remember right now. Oh, yes. I am gonna be doing inventory of, um, our, our dress and, well, basically our formal wear inventory, um, this month and could possibly use some help in regards to that effect. I'm going to try to get everything logged into a spreadsheet in regards to the sizes that we have, probably sizes and colors. And then, also working on the stuff that's already coming, that's starting to come in now. But, I want to get the backlog of what we have from last year so I can figure out what needs to be donated this year after the March event and then what we're going to keep until next year. So, if anyone's willing to help me with that, that would be really great. And then, also, we have some dresses coming from Indiana. And the retailer did let me know there might be a couple that have slight damage. And so, I know that we have our sewing club at Marina High School. So, if we could possibly talk to them to see if this is a project they want to take on. I don't know how many dresses are coming. I just know that they said they've already packaged them and shipped them out. But, she did say there may be a few that have some slight damage to them, like missing sequence or a slight run or tear, something like that. So, if we can talk to the Marina Sewing Club, that would be really great. And that's all.
Awesome. There you go. Problem solved.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Now, we're going to move to board requests. Board requests are an opportunity for board members to request future items to be added to the agenda by the agenda-setting committee or to request information to be provided by the superintendent or designee to the board at a future date and time. It's understood that items raised during the board request section are not on the adopted agenda, and therefore, no further discussion will occur. I'm going to start on my right. Trustee Blaskas, board request. Trustee Oftedle. Dr. Lusk. Vice President. I don't even have to say the names. Nothing? Nothing? Okay. Oh, you ruined it for me. No, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I, at one of the luncheons at the conference, I was sitting with a new board member three months in. And she said that her, at their meetings, they have a laminated copy of educational acronyms, not only for new board members, but for, at every seat, this laminated, it's two-sided or whatever. And they keep adding to it. But, I think as a non-educator, that would be so lovely. Thank you.
Trustee Blaskas.
I was going to say, when I first joined the board, Janet gave me a binder of them, like, or... Oh, okay. Yeah, true.
Yeah. Because I'm always Googling those acronyms. What's this mean? Okay. All right. Good. Anything else? All right. Now, we'll move to advanced planning. Our next meeting is next year. January 13th, 2026, right here. Is there a motion to adjourn? I would like to move myself to adjourn in, in, in memory of Ms. Helen Rucker, if we may. Were you going to? You do it. Go for it. But, you wanted to read something?
Yes.
Go for it. I'll allow. Will allow.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. President, for moving to adjourn our meeting today in loving memory of Helen Rucker, September 1932, September 3rd, 1932. Sorry.
I just got the look. Sorry. And the look. So, I, thank you, Mr. President, for moving to adjourn our meeting in loving memory of Helen Rucker, September 3rd, 1932, November 19th, 2025. Helen Rucker was a woman, an activist, and a woman whose shoulders that so many of us stand upon. She was a, and I'm so grateful to our superintendent for naming the learning center at CSAT High School in her memory, for she was a large part and a strong partner who worked with her husband to establish the Army Junior ROTC Program at CSAT High School. As she was a partner with him to do so much in our community. But, that stands out very much for our community and for the children that have gone through that program and now are officers and so much more themselves. So, with that being said, the community remembers the Helen Rucker that says, "You don't have the right not to vote." My people died so that you could vote. That was her message to this community.
That's right.
Mr. President, I'd also like to take the time to acknowledge. Just recently notified the passing of a longtime teacher in the district, a product of MPUSD, Tom Grick. He was the MBTA president for many years, an elementary school teacher who did a fantastic job and would like to remember him and all that he did for our community. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. So, did we get a second on that?
Second.
We did. Thank you. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you.